Jake, can you hear me now?
Yep, we got you loud and clear.
Thank you. Okay. I'm pleased with the turnout. Nice crowd today, so welcome. And we'll call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council this April 22nd, 2025. We're beginning our meeting at 4:32 PM in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present, either online or in person. So we have in-person, Councilmember Hune, Councilmember Norfeldt, Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Wedstone, Councilmember Harmon. Online, we have Councilmember Christensen, myself, and we're also joined at the table by our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We have our minutes of April 8th, 2025. Turn those to the council for discussion or emotion.
Do you approve the April 8th meeting?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those, any opposed? Nope. Okay, so those stand approved. We now have our presentation of our new employees. So we'll begin with and invite Mr. Pastrick up to introduce his new employee.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce Max Gula. He's our newest planner in community development. Max was, we were able to poach him from Utah County, so he was reviewing permits for them down there. One just interesting tidbit about Max is he's a lacrosse coach, so glad to have him.
And he has cool sweaters.
Yes, he does. That's one of many, actually, so.
Always fun. Hey, thank you, welcome. All right, well now invite Mr. Johnson up to introduce his new two employees.
Good afternoon, this is Sage Young, and Sage is a street maintenance worker, and Jason Green is a street, is one of our new operators, a CDL operator. So grateful to have both of these guys, and you see him out on the crew, waving and be polite, so they do hard work.
Okay, thank you. Nice to meet you. Now we'll invite Chief Jacobs up to introduce her two new employees.
Good afternoon, I have two officers to introduce to you this afternoon. Officer Clint Carter and Officer Ian Glacken. Interesting fact about both of them is they have both worked for us before, and they chose to go somewhere else for a little while, and now they're back, and we're very, very grateful to have them back, so.
It makes training easy.
Yes, it does, and makes it fast, too.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Welcome. And finally, we'll invite Steve Calbert up to introduce his new employee.
Good afternoon, I'd like to introduce Amelia Casta. She has joined us as a court here. She moved here from New York and is a resident of West Valley City, and has been here about 10 years, and really enjoys the city. And now she's a great new member of our team and has done a fantastic job. I'd like to welcome her, so thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Okay, thank you for introducing the new employees. Now go to our review of tonight's agenda. Does anybody have any adjustments to regular meeting? No, ma'am. Okay, and any questions for the regular meeting? It's pretty short and sweet.
You know, good years coming.
You do, so I reached out to the principal a few weeks ago, and they were really excited and plan to be there tonight.
All right, we'll now turn the time over to Mr. Welch for our tentative budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026.
Thank you, Mayor. You'll be seeing, I guess, a lot of me in the next couple of months, because there's a lot of resolutions we have to do with the finances of the city and the budget. As you mentioned, this is the consideration of adoption of what's called the tentative budget, which is a budget that is adopted prior to the final budget, which will be the one that we'll operate on for next year. This budget is required to be adopted before the other budget. It gives us an interim period to operate while we consider the adoption of your final budget. It's required by state statute, and that's why we're here before you tonight. The nature of the budget is that it is tentative, so if there are additions, changes, modifications that need to be made before the final budget, that could certainly be made. So with that, I'll give you kind of a snapshot of what this budget will be. And they changed the law a little bit this year. In the past, there have been no, in this little bit of an update, they have not required a public hearing for the adoption of the tentative budget. That changed in 2024. I did a little bit of research on that, so this is new. So there will be an opportunity for the public to provide comment specific to the tentative budget, and that's really the only change that they made in that, so why don't you be aware of that? This year's budget is proposed at, the general fund is $120 million. The total budget is $195. And we usually pay mostly attention to the general fund budget, and that's the one I'll be spending most of my time on, for the simple fact that that's the majority of operations funds. That's where you find our public services. Generally, it's where you find the main services that the city is known for providing. So this year of the 120, you'll note that the sales tax is proposed to be about, or projected to be about 39% of our revenue. Property tax is about 30%, and the remaining 31% comes from utility taxes and other user fees. Also, there's a section there for reserves, where we expect to, at this point, propose the use of reserves or another source of revenue that can be discovered, that can be considered. As you know, and we've had a lot of discussions about the budget this year and the last year, we try and maintain somewhat of a diversified revenue stream, so that we do have some flexibility during recessions or during economic challenges. And you can kind of see what our chart looks like today. There may be some opportunities to rebalance that as you consider it in your governing stats. The way that we spend the money this next year, we are required to have a balanced budget, which is nice about, nice thing about municipal budgets. We can't run a deficit, so we have to present to you a balanced budget. 54% of the budget goes towards public safety. That was interesting to note. 19 is fire and 35 is police. The other larger sections that you see, one is called non-departmental. For those that are not familiar with this, this is where we categorize any expenditures that don't necessarily fall under a specific department. So that would include debt service or other obligations for, for example, the Utopia Fiber Project, or it also includes transfers for the road projects, sales tax funds that we're getting right now. We expect to get about $5 million this next year from the, in addition to the sales tax that was previously imposed, to a new sales tax that was imposed to allow us to upkeep our streets, which we really appreciate. So that's where those kind of things fall into it. Then under administration, there's a number of operations that go under that. We've got the justice courts. We have central services, which is our communications. We have our IT department. We have HR, animal control, public facilities, and a couple of other divisions in there. As we've done the employee meetings in the last two days, I brought up an interesting stat that I haven't paid a lot of attention to, you might find interesting, and that being a very diverse corporation, if you will, although we're a public service corporation, we have, we divide our operations up into divisions. So each division is a discrete operation of the city. So it might be a division that handles stormwater, or a division that handles debt service, or something like that. We have 153 divisions, so we're very diverse in our operations, and it's a lot of stuff to keep your hands around. So they all fall under that, and I thought that would be interesting for you. Yes, please?
Does it, maybe it doesn't make sense. To me, it would make sense to have the justice court separated out in expenses, since you have it separated out in revenues.
The justice court is separated out in revenues and expenditures. For this graphic, they've been consolidated. So yeah, if you look at the detailed budget, which I think we gave to you all in your packet, so you have the detailed budget, they are brought out. So I appreciate you bringing that. That is important. Yeah, this graphic, we tried to make that somewhat simplified, and that may be a little bit confusing that way, so. This, this is basically the information you just got on the previous slide, but in tabular form. Not a lot to mention there, other than we do show an increase of 6.2% from last year's budget to this year's budget. Most of that increase has to do with items that we are required to cover. That would be contractual issues or things that were critical to the operation, whether that would be things like, I think we had the parking lot in City Hall that needed to be done, or else we were going to lose it. We also had some security issues that needed to be addressed, and some other projects that needed to be included in that, too. So that makes up the majority of those. This slide gives you an idea of the type of reserves that we are proposing being used. So in the general fund, we have regular revenues of about $115 million. We have expenditures of 120. And as I mentioned before, there's a proposed either use of reserves or use of adjustment in our revenue stream to cover the difference of that 4.4. And then we do have some reserves in our capital improvement project fund. Some of those were allocated from this year. You'll remember some of those, like the land acquisition that has recently come to you, the pool sand filters, Veterans Memorial, which will also be addressing an adjustment tonight that will be, that's intended to be paid for from CIP. CIP, pretty much by definition, is for capital improvements. That'd be one-time expenditures. One-time money goes in there when we find ourselves, we have a sale of land, or we have a, some sort of money that comes in that doesn't, it's not ongoing regular revenue source. We'll often put that in capital improvements for these future type of projects. And then of the 26 requests from the departments, it was determined through our budget committee that about 1.27 of those was projects that were required and needed to be done, so that we didn't lose important infrastructure, and then we recommended another 1.9. This, I think an important thing is, as a government, there's very, some basic services that we have to provide to basically protect the health, welfare, and safety of our citizens. And I pulled this one together from the requests that were made from the police department and the fire department. And these are the items that, through the budget committee and with our management, that we determined were either absolutely required. For example, the AVEC increase. AVEC's going to assess us at an extra $220,000. We have no choice other than to, I guess, do without dispatch, which is probably not a choice at all. And then we have other opportunities that have come up, and I think you're aware of most of those. This year, the total public safety new investment is a little over $3.5 million, which I think is significant, and you should be aware of that. The, we've classified the new expenditures by those that are required and those that are recommended. This gives you kind of an idea, at least from a big-dollar point of view, what the recommend, what the required ones are. So these include everything from those security contracts that we mentioned, equipment upgrades, and infrastructure. And then those that were recommended. You can see, most of our recommendations came through our public safety divisions. We expected to fund the, these $3.2 million from the general fund, and then the 1.9 from the capital improvement fund, which I had just showed you a couple of slides ago. The, I also wanted to bring this to your attention. I know you've seen this slide before, but this gives the idea, if you were to consider a property tax increase, the approximate amount that, it's showing a black bar, isn't it? That would be required to raise certain amounts of revenue. For example, in order to increase $1 million in the revenue stream for the city to cover services, it would require about a 3% change in the rate. For residents, that comes up to $17 annually, and about $1.44 on a monthly basis. To cover the whole amount, if we didn't want to use any of our reserves, that's the $4.4 million. That would be about $6.41 a month, or $76.90 on an annual basis. If you'll remember, the difference between the business and residential is that residences have a 45% reduction in their taxable value. That's to encourage people to have homes and to, to encourage people to have a stronger base for their families. So that's just a reminder. Some things that we talked about in the strategic planning retreat, we've tried to mention those in all the slides that we've had, and I thought I would just bring those up again. That we're trying to promote housing stability, infrastructure, and I think that's probably, that's the end of mine, isn't it? Okay, there we go. I'm getting into yours, aren't we? So with that, that is the end of mine. I will go into the next one. Yes, please, Mayor.
On the property taxes, residential, if it's a rental house, it's taxed at 100%, not the 45% discount, correct?
That is correct. If they're not the primary residential or secondary?
Primary, regardless of ownership. It's, ownership doesn't affect it, whether or not it's primary residential. So rental units are taxed at 55%. Senior units, assisted living is also taxed at 55%. It's only if it's primary, it's only if it's the primary residential. If it's secondary home, then it's taxed at 100%.
But if I live in West Valley, but I have a home in Orem that I rent out?
Second, that's, that's considered an investment property.
Right.
It would be taxed.
And that's what I was talking about, sorry.
Sorry, excuse me.
Yeah, so an investment property that's rented out.
That's the.
But it's a residential. It's 100%, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Just making sure.
Yeah, that's a very important point.
And how do we decide if, how do we catch them if they don't get a business license and declare themselves as a rental? Is it by the property owner and who really lives there, or?
That's a.
That's a hard one to even.
It's a, it's a difficult one. So the county does most of the research on what is primary residential or not. They actually do the assessment, and they actually do the determination. From a business license point of view, we actually go out and we compare, we compare the address of the property tax notice with the address of the property. And then we will often send them out a notice and say, hey, this appears to be a rental. And we try and share as much information as we can back and forth. It's not perfect, but that's how we try and identify them.
Okay, but that is the instance where a residential home could be taxed as a business?
Yes.
If the owner, okay. That's why I was just making sure in my brain, so.
No, that's important.
Wrong. Well, we're clarifying. So utility tax, if it's cable TV, because it's aligned to your house, it's taxable? But if it's direct TV, because it's through the air, it's not?
That's correct, and that's the way the state law is just set up right now. It's been that way for a number of years.
Same thing with phones? Landlines are taxable, mobile phones are not?
Mobile phones are taxed. We do, yes, we do get a telecom tax. That, that interesting work that you mentioned has been around for about 20 years, and it had to do with like satellite. And I don't think they anticipated things like satellite, internet, and telephone, things like that. But yeah, there is a section that we don't end up getting taxed, and that's a federal law.
Okay, and so our cell phones are taxed?
Cell phones are taxed, yep.
In my brain, I had it as the same as the cable and direct TV type of thing.
Yeah, they're both, both different, but you're correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before Jim moves on?
Yeah, maybe, even as you mentioned about you, Paul, can you update us about that?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Utopia is still in expansion mode. I don't know if they, I can't remember the last time they came and presented to the council, but I know periodically they do that. They are continuing to generate positive revenue and to pay us a portion of a dividend that comes back. It's not enough to cover the debt service right now, but it has been increasing. We budgeted another $200,000 on top of the, I think it was 1.4 or 1.6 million dollars we're getting from there right now. And that's expected to continue to grow as they bring on new subscribers and take on new systems. So it's getting positive, it's helping, but yeah, we're still, we still have the obligation, and we will in the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to introduce who's going to come to the next part? Maybe not. Do you want to introduce your next person?
Do you want to introduce?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not on my agenda, so.
We didn't have a cover page for you, so you'll have to be in the cover page.
Oh, okay.
I'm Peggy Calder from the Grants Division in the Community Development Department, and I'm here to talk about our CDBG, which is our Community Development Block Grant, our five-year plan. HUD requires us to do that every five years, as it would indicate. We put together information that helps us to set the priorities for the next five years, and so that, have a recommendation for the city council to look at before we send it to HUD. There are four goals, and underneath each of those goals, we have some priorities. Our first one is improve housing stability. And then we have housing rehabilitation, emergency assistance, and new development assistance, which is, includes acquisition of real property for low-to-moderating income housing. We have infrastructure and public facilities, community facilities, nonprofit facilities, parks, sidewalks, and street improvements. Thank you. Then we have our public services. Our focuses are youth and children's services, crime prevention, services for victims of domestic abuse, homeless and self-sufficiency services, senior and elderly services, services addressing mental and physical health, services for people with disability. And our last goal is to improve economic mobility, which includes employment training, English as a second language, and micro, micro enterprise assistance, and then supportive services. So we put those together for the five years, and then we had our CDBG committee look at our applications for our 25, 26 CDBG allocations. And this is the recommendation that they have, is to fund our, under public services, which can only be 15% of our total budget is West Valley's Victim Services to part, division, which is 15,000. West Valley Police Department at 60,000. South Valley Sanctuary at 25,000. American Preparatory Academy at 20,000. The in-between at 10,000, the Road Home at 12,000. And then our Parks and Recreation Youth Programs at 10,000, and Legal Aid Society at 11,000. And then our Infrastructure and Public Facilities, which is 65, which can be up to about 65% of our allocation, is our home rehab program at 6,730,862. And then the Oasis House at 74,000. West Valley Parks and Recreation at 150,000. So I know you look at that, and it doesn't quite add up to the total there, but we have, we had to pay the HUD $150,000. And HUD has now allowed us to use that in future projects. So we'll be adding that, which helps us to be able to fund the Parks and Rec program for that. And then we have about 140, I'm sorry, about 74,000 of rollover money from previous years. So that's our proposed budget for the 25, 26, and our five-year plan with the priorities and goals. Any questions?
Any questions? Yep.
So on the five-year program and priorities and goals, are the, it's pretty broad on what areas we could focus on. Is that intentional, so as applications come in?
It's very intentional, because if we were to say we are only going to fund like a specific project or a specific organization, then we would, we would have to do an amendment to that five-year plan in order to bring on a different project.
And then on this year's allocations, I apologize, I wasn't able to join the committee this year. I really enjoyed figuring on that.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Schedule just didn't allow. But like on organizations where the nonprofit isn't located in the city, are those, are we still ensuring that the funds benefit residents of the city?
Yes, they report on the number of residents, West Valley residents that they serve, such as South Valley Services, their. There, there's only the two domestic violence services in the county and West Valley is one of their major. Residents from West Valley is probably the number one group that they serve, so.
I say in-between and the Road Home.
The in-between, the committee wanted to recommend them even there. They have increased the number of people that they are able to serve, even though it's fairly low still. You're welcome to make recommendations. Change, we can change numbers, amount of money or agencies also.
I just had a question on how these amounts are derived. Are these, are these public services requesting these amounts or the committee?
So the public services is a competitive application process. And the committee decided to fund the West Valley agencies applied at 100% of what they applied for. And then we divided the money up. The, there are two of them, the American Preparatory and South Valley Services was decided to allocate them the same amount of money as they are getting this year.
Okay, and then, so what, when we give the 20,000 to American Preparatory, what is that going towards?
They run an after-school program, daycare and after-school program.
And is some of it going to their music program as well?
Their music program is part of that after-school program. Yeah. So.
That's what I thought it was more music as well as.
Yeah.
Have we heard of from HUD whether the CDBG is going to continue? There's a lot of federal.
No, that would be a crystal ball question, but we have received information that our allocation should remain the same as what we're receiving this year or pretty close to that. The next four years of our plan, not quite sure what that's going to be yet.
So do you know how many dollars were applied for?
There was.
I don't know how many were given out.
In public services, there was $210,000 applied for. And in the infrastructure and public facilities, 946,900.
Any other questions? And I apologize, you were next on the agenda. I just got mixed up between you and Jim. Why he was talking to you before you were announced, so.
That's okay.
Apologize for that.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hey, now we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick for a public hearing that will take care of application ZPZ 1, 2025. And then we'll have two ordinance changes under all of that.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a request to amend the city's general plan and zoning from Concord Homes. The, the applicant is Sam Drown with Concord Homes. And the property is at 3201 South Redwood Road. So the property that's subject to the change is three point, about 3.2 acres. So as we'll, I'll show here in a minute, the plan currently shows a mix of commercial and low-density residential. And the request is to amend the general plan for medium-density residential. And then to rezonate property from C2 and R112 to the RM zone. So here, this next slide shows the four properties in question. And for the largest piece that's in the northwest, it's only a portion of that property. So basically the, if you're familiar with the Beto's Restaurant, that the, the property immediately around Beto's would be excluded. That would remain commercial and the C2 zoning. So the change applies to everything else and I'll show that here in a site plan shortly. Just for reference, when you look at what's around this, so you have to the north, you have a strip mall here. And then these are three-story condos. You have homes here to the east and south. And then there's some vacant property, some homes, and then a business, a business theater. And then it's Utah barricade here is on the west side of Redwood Road. So just zooming in a little bit, you can see here's the, the Beto's Restaurant here and there's a few other buildings, like a, a home here. Then this is kind of an abandoned home here in the back and some other outbuildings on the, on the property. This just shows again the zoning. So this green outline, you can see that the western two parcels are zoned commercial. The eastern two parcels are zoned R112. So that's the current zoning. This was an earlier iteration of the concept plan over another one here in a second. So the area that's in this kind of pinkish color is the area that would remain commercial where the, the Beto's Restaurant is. So the change that's proposed would apply to everything else that's on this. And so the proposal would be to have developed this, the remainder as townhomes. And as I mentioned, there were a number of iterations and, and this is the one, this is the final version that the planning commission saw. And the idea was that in this iteration, so you have a, a public street that would connect Redwood Road to Lester Street. And our code does allow for park, strip and sidewalk on one side of the street. But the planning commission in this instance felt that having those improvements on both sides of the street would, would be better. And so, so that's reflected in this concept. So you have a total of 31 townhomes proposed here where the garage is in front. These are three-bedroom units that are proposed. The sizes of these units range from just under 1,600 square feet to about 1,700 square feet. You can see they all have driveways you could park in and then they're providing parking in different pockets on the site to meet the additional parking that's required by, by the ordinance. One of the things that was actually considered by the staff a few years ago was the Beto's Restaurant had requested a reduction to their parking. So at this location, the lobby actually is no longer open. They, it's only the drive-through. And so that was actually approved from by staff a few years ago. So this just shows the, the plan for sort of reconfiguring that site to have the parking and the drive-through work with the new road coming in through the middle of the site. This was an early rendering of the, the townhome units that were, that were proposed. And then after doing some feedback from the planning commission, they came back with this iteration. And the main difference here is, and if I can go back to the concept plan, I think it'll help, is these units here on Lester Street. Originally, the idea was that you would have a wall along here. But again, through feedback from the planning commission, the thought was, you know, you have residential on both sides of the street. Instead of walling this off, make that open, open that up and then have these in-units sort of face that street. And so that's what this version does is that this would be, oops, went too far. The bottom image here will be the side view. So this is what you would see from Lester Street and this would be the, the fronts of the units. So these are just the elevations of that. So the sides and then the rear elevation. The floor plans, again, two stories. And some pictures. So this is looking west from Lester Street. So where that fence is or that wall is that, that wall would be removed. And then again, you can see where the, the condos are just to the north. This is moving a little bit further south on Lester Street. So again, looking west into the site, again, this, this fence would be removed. This is looking north on Lester Street. So you can see the homes on the east side and the condos there on the west side in the distance. This is looking to the northeast. So again, the homes on the inside of Lester Street. So now moving out to Redwood Road, this is the home that's on the, the south partial that's right on Redwood Road. So in, if this is approved, this home would actually be demolished. So looking north on Redwood, so again, on the right, you can see the home that would be removed. And then you can see the Beto's Restaurant out in the distance. This is looking east into the site from Redwood. North on Redwood, so we did mention landscaping improvements that are needed here, maintenance that's needed on the site. Looking just straight east at the Beto's Restaurant. Again, just highlighting where some maintenance is needed there. This is more towards the northwest corner of the site. Again, looking, so the Beto's is there on the right. This is just behind the Beto's Restaurant, looking more towards the northeast. Looking more to the southeast. So just a couple of older buildings there on the site that would be removed. Looking straight east, you can see this, this home out in the, the distance that will be demolished. And then last, again, another structure that will be demolished. So for reference, I'll go back to the concept plan. All right, lots of images. Okay, there we go. So as you mentioned, Mayor, should we have two action items for the council to consider? One is to, an ordinance to change the, the zoning. The other is an ordinance to change the general plan. Now, normally in a case like this, we would have a development agreement that the council would also consider. However, in this case, the planning commission ultimately ended up recommending denial. And so because of that, we did not prepare a development agreement. However, if the council would like or would like to direct staff to do that, we can. But that's been our practice in the past is if the planning commission recommends denial, we have not prepared a development agreement. But again, we can do that if that's the council's desire.
Hey, any questions from the council for Mr. Pastrick?
Yes. Why the planning commission dated pre-check of this?
Yeah, good question. So there was a lot of, there was a lot of discussion back and forth and, and you saw as I kind of went through things, there were some comments made by the commission that the developer then took and incorporated into the design. But in the end, for those that expressed sort of their opposition, it seemed to me the main reason, as I went back and reviewed the meeting minutes, was that they felt like the, the frontage, like of the entire frontage should be commercial and that there shouldn't be residential along the, the frontage for Redwood. That seemed to be the, the main objection. I know in your packet, there is a letter from the, the landowner where they've, they've tried to attract another commercial use to this. And the challenge has been that there's limited frontage left because Beto's takes up most of the frontage. And so as they've tried to market the site to different tenants, they've still have the struggle to find someone interested in just what's left on the frontage. Because Beto's has a lease that I think lasts over nine years at this point, so.
Steve, does, would it be allowed to have this type of residential if it didn't have access to Redwood? So could they, I mean, I guess they can do anything, right? Try to get us to approve anything, but.
Yeah, so interesting. So part of the, I'll try to hit that from two different angles. So during the planning commission discussion, there were some concerns from residents about traffic. And so one thing that was suggested by the owner was actually to only have access off Redwood and not connect to Lester Street. So that was one idea that was floated. But as far as not connecting to Redwood, so the, the code states that in order to be eligible for this zoning, you have to have access and frontage on a, a major street like Redwood.
It may be feet or something?
A hundred, a hundred, yeah.
So, so if we said, well, we don't want you to have access to Redwood, well, then makes it more difficult to with the zoning.
Right.
Change. Cause I, I don't say Cindy, the, in, I think Cindy said that. It makes sense to have residential on the, on the residential side and commercial on the commercial side.
What is the frontage of that other piece to the south?
No, I don't, I don't recall offhand, but the, you know, just, just if you exclude the street and just eyeballing it, I would say it's probably less than 100 feet.
But if the street was there to make it more attractive to a commercial, but it'd be a lot deeper strip possibly?
Yeah, another issue we had discussed with the commission is that, so the minimum size for a commercial lot is 20,000 square feet, which the Beto's is. But by the time you have the road in there, you can see that you would have to, that commercial piece would have to be deeper in order to get the 20,000 square feet. Which again, makes it somewhat awkward because you're, you're narrower and deep.
Can you remind me what was proposed on that east piece about five or six years ago?
So we, we had a proposal around that timeframe where it was to request that, that the entire thing be commercial, but it was for like a, a collection of like used car dealers. And the council said no to that.
So it wasn't residential on that east piece? It was all.
It was all, all commercial and, and used car sales.
Thank you. I couldn't remember. I knew something, but I can't remember what it was. So then you mentioned, you know, no development agreement. Is that because the commission recommended denial, so you just didn't do one?
Correct, correct. And again, that's, that's been our practice. But if the, if the council would like, we can change that. And regardless of what the commission says, we can still forward a, a development agreement. But yeah, we'll, whatever your pleasure is there.
So what would happen? I mean, this is just a hypothetical. If the council decided to approve it without a development agreement?
So I wouldn't recommend that. And the reason is the, so the, the ordinance actually requires whenever you're rezoning property to the RM zone, we actually require a development agreement. So if we actually, as we were working with the planning commission, we had a number of recommendations for a development agreement. So if, if the council would like, we can certainly prepare that and have it be ready for two weeks from now. We would just like to know if that's, if that's your direction, then we can, we can prepare that.
So it looks like that there is some additional parking there based at the Beto's.
Correct.
So they would have some sort of agreement with that property too.
Exactly. So, so basically it, all the property currently is under one ownership and the current owners agreed to essentially share some parking there. So that was the way for them to.
Achieve the parking.
Achieve the parking numbers. The challenge here is again, with the, the public street is trying to find places where you can put that and not block driveways and right? It's, it's somewhat challenging in this particular site. We, they'd originally shown some on Lester Street, but then Public Works didn't want to have cars back under Lester, so they moved it internal to the site.
How deep are the driveways?
If memory serves, they're, so the units are somewhat staggered, so they're not all just in a row, right? So it varies between, I believe it's 18 and 20 feet is what they're showing.
So a Prius, not a truck or a Denali or a Yukon?
So a, just for what it's worth, in a, in a shopping center or just 18 feet is a typical parking stall, so.
Some.
We, we have a, the Redwood, you know, talking about the pest farm, they're going to build, which improved recently about last year, over 400 homes, tower house, not a home, but a house.
The drive-in, the drive-in site?
I think we did some kind of commercial to show that otherwise it's going to be underserved in that area. You know what I'm saying? Yeah, there's so many tower houses there have no place to go around to be what in, something in it. They're going to do something commercial too. But I know it's sound, they said themselves it's hard to do the style of, that piece of property and I know east and also southwest, I mean, southeast. uh, that piece of property and I know east and also southwest, I mean, south east. Um, but would love to have some guy that come up show to support the area enough on fun, but here.
When the planning commission met and talked about items in development agreement, also, I just, did it address that those virtual site to kind of clean that up and?
We, we did, yeah. So we, we included um, um, and you'll, this is in the meeting minutes, been in our, in our staff report. We mentioned, you know, maintaining the the landscaping that's already there. And then also that, be- before they started construction on any of the townhomes, they would modify the site. So again, if I go through this image, so th- this image shows sort of a future condition, right? But basically, the if you look at this area here where they have the, these parking stalls, that would become landscaping, right? And uh, and then just the parking lot would be sort of reconfigured, so in order for this road to essentially work, this site needs to be modified. So that was one of the, the conditions was to say, you know, make these modifications so that the, the rest of the project can move forward.
Then what's the, the parking stalls for guests? Is that adequate? Does it need the parking requirements?
It does. Under, under this version here, it does.
I just see potential on-street parking. People are gonna park there.
This, yeah, the, the, the difficulty in, in this one, as far as, is when you look at just the number of driveways, there just aren't that many opportunities to park. I mean, this road would be wide enough to, to, it's, it's a typical residential street in terms of width. There just aren't that many pockets where you're not blocking someone's driveway, right?
And I'm not a total fan of the shared parking with Beto's and the townhomes. Would they access that parking through the Beto's?
Yes.
Yes.
Steve, as far as the stacking goes, um, what's the rule? I mean, on the menu board, it seems like it's not enough to prevent I don't know, maybe during some busy time from stacking the middle road?
Or, yeah, we, we did look at that, and that was um, approved a number of years ago, just given the so, so as part of that, they had a, a traffic engineer look at um, sorry, this is really touchy. Um, they had a traffic engineer look at just the volume at the restaurant and um, the amount of stacking needed, and and based on that analysis, they provided that this, this essentially layout was uh, approved, given the number of stalls and the, the space for stacking.
But currently, they have that whole parking lot they can stack into and then go north? If you look on the before picture?
Current.
The current picture?
Yeah, I've been there once, and it didn't seem like there was over amount of.
Yeah, I mean, if this, if this were Chick-fil-A or In-N-Out, I'd be worried.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's not Chick-fil-A.
I've never been to one of those, these restaurants, so I don't know. I have friends that go at two AM. Whatever reason, but pardon?
They have a good burrito.
Do they?
Yeah.
If you don't plan on eating for a week.
Because it's big enough, it'll fill you. That's what, there's another place that we go to that that's, it feeds a family. Yeah.
Well, for me, I don't know how everybody else would feel, but I feel like a development agreement is kind of necessary. I don't know, to review this. Does everyone else feel, or I'm off base?
Well, I, I think if, if we are going to approve it.
Right.
The items that that are mentioned in those minutes could, could easily be made into a, a development agreement. So if we did a little straw poll here, and there's a chance that it can approve, we can instruct staff to prepare a development. I'm tending toward approving, because we need more affordable housing. I think this is a good location.
Will these be affordable? Are these gonna be in the seven hundred range or the four hundred range?
Um, you know, the developer hasn't given me a, a price point. I can ask the question.
Cause the three bedroom is a pretty good size.
Yeah, so the, these are a pretty good sized townhomes. If, if I had to guess, they'd probably be in the four to five hundred thousand dollar range. Um, but, but again, with today's interest rates, that's not really affordable, but it's, I mean, it's, it's more affordable than a single-family home. Yeah.
So for me, the land between the north boundary and then to thirty-three hundred, I don't know if it's ever going to change, but I think that's a better swath to develop. It'd be better for a commercial, whatever. Cause there is a big need down there for a grocery store. Now, if a grocery store goes somewhere else, so there's big pieces, then it wouldn't be such a need for that area, but I don't know.
Smith's, just a couple bucks.
So Smith's is on forty-one hundred south.
Yeah. And I Lucky's that's on three.
There is Lucky's on thirty-fifth, and you do have uh some smaller ethnic groceries, like rancher markets at the street on uh, seven hundred west, yeah, or south, excuse me.
I've just had a lot of people complain that there's not good access to a grocery store. And I don't know why. That's just the comments I've gotten for that area. I can see why you would definitely want the block wall down on the east side of the property and just put something nicer. Um, I wouldn't be opposed to the block wall being moved back behind the sidewalk if they wanted to still put that block wall and keep it more of a private community than a so I didn't understand the block, why I can see taking down the existing, but I'm not against putting up new one behind the back or the sidewalk.
Yeah, the main, the main issue right now is on that, um, on the west side, there's actually no sidewalk or park strip, so uh, currently, so that was one of the suggestions that they, they put in those improvements along Lester.
That was to the north?
Correct. And then um, yeah, the, the, at least as the planning commission was discussing, at their preference um, before they motioned to deny, was to um, to actually remove the wall and just have it be more open.
Okay.
Just because you're across the street from.
Yeah, neighbors, yeah.
On Lester.
But yeah. Yeah. But I can see why you want block wall, existing block wall gone.
Go along with the Larson. I like the residential. I'm still struggling with that right up on Redwood.
Me too.
The Beto's. Well, that's my, that's what's holding me up, wanting to approve it. But understanding that it's not big enough for commercial, but
Well, it would be.
If it's something.
Yeah, it'd just be a deeper lot for commercial. I mean, I think commercial would work there. But I don't know where the two fifty mark would be. It'd have to be about fifty deep. And I can't figure that out in my brain as far as the picture.
How deep is the Beto's?
Let's go back to, to that image. Yeah, sorry, I'm not, I'm not exactly like, back and get those numbers.
I don't know how deep that strip mall is just to the north.
A little deeper.
Uh, may I say something?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think maybe the this piece of property, the north side of this is probably maybe to put a mom, mom and pop store and the south side is gonna be a parking lot. I know we have a Lucky's store. We have Rancho, we have Smith, but they all men traffic. It's very hard to go into the store, you know, left turn or right turn. And um, if they have a mom and pop store here, they can jump in and get the bar of milk or gallon of milk and then get out quickly. Rather than go to Lucky's store or Rancho Market, find a parking in here and there, or even a Smith. So I think it's a good location for mom and pop store. And inside you can have a piece of herd, or maybe the other store in the north side, you know what I'm saying? The south side can be the parking lot. Be perfect. I I know there are similar reasons.
The residential totally makes sense.
Yeah.
Where it's the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That half, but the first, front half, I agree with the commercial would be a better use. And they could be divided, so you could have a street back to the commercial and then that back part residential, cause I do think there's a need for residential on Lester. Would only do, I can't tell, without having the dimensions on there, if it would work like the one on thirty-two, where you got it townhomes and then townhomes behind Arby's. The phones on the road and then Lester and then some behind it, and then leave that property to the west commercial. Cause I can definitely see it dividing it, cause obviously we turned down the commercial all the way to Lester, and it doesn't seem like there's an appetite to take the residential all the way to Redwood. So with both times we've seen it, it might just be better to divide it
I'll read.
for future development.
I'm just looking at, just down the street on Redwood, the Trong Development on Crippin Way, they have commercial for the first um, hundred feet, and it's residential. I think, I think that ought to be kind of a standard for Redwood, you know, but there's a right up against Redwood and I don't know if that's what we want, but.
A little harsh.
Yeah.
So we do, what's, we do have a blend of that, so you think, for example, the, the drive-in, uh, in that case, uh, we approved condos out on Redwood. And so, so it's kind of a mixed bag. You have some projects where the townhomes go right up to Redwood, and other places you have a commercial frontage, so it's, it's mixed.
So does Councilman Christensen have any questions or have any hands up or anything? I just don't want to ignore him if he's like doing this.
Oh, we can't send it to unmuted, so maybe.
No, I have no questions.
Okay, do you see any need for a development agreement?
I think a development agreement is always good as we develop the property, so I think we would need one.
The base that does go through, okay. I can see both sides, for then again, so I would probably put one together, email it out, and then if there's any changes by the council, or are we gonna see those two study sessions? This will be first in May.
Yeah, so we did this one this way, just because the planning commission recommended denial, and we wanted the opportunity if the council had a different direction.
Yeah, so it looks like we might have a need.
That would probably be a no in its current form, so.
Yeah.
If your accountant noses.
Yeah, there's a no, a no, probably a no. I don't know, Tom, are you, we can't vote, but.
Yeah, I, I, I support it. I have it as a commercial and I have three sitting.
So.
But in the current form.
Current form.
Yeah.
So would we review this again on the sixth?
Um, yes, but we'd review again on the sixth, and then the regular meeting would be on the thirteenth, the public hearing.
So in its current, we probably
Probably don't need a development.
Possibly not. That's what I'm trying to decide. Have it just in case or just?
We're gonna study this twice, so I wouldn't do a development agreement, though, at least after the next one, and then.
Well, then, well, we have one week.
And the council can always continue.
Okay. The direction changes to the twenty-seventh. Okay. Okay.
So, so don't prepare, okay? Thank you.
Let everybody mull it over and then on the sixth, we'll review it again. Hopefully, we can give better direction. Cause we are having one on the sixth, one on the thirteenth, and one on the twenty-seventh, correct?
Yes, we scheduled that extra meeting for the ten of the budget.
Yeah. Cause it has begun by a certain time.
And just clarification on current current form, I mean, have you got enough direction?
I do, so I can. I can convey some of the council's concerns to the applicant, and then um, again, I my, my understanding is perhaps if there's more discussion on the sixth, that we may decide to do a development agreement, but for now, we're not.
Correct.
Okay.
That's how I understand it. And there's enough nodding heads, then that's, we're good. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to our resolutions, and we'll turn the time over to Chief Evans for the purchase of personal protective equipment. Too many slides today.
Get, is it here for a second? Thank you. Uh-huh. Good afternoon. Uh, this is a request to purchase nine sets of PPE, personal protective gear. What that is, it's the gear we wear in fires, the pants, the coat, and the boots. Um, these nine sets will go to the new, new recruits we have right now. They're in loner gear, uh, turnout gear now from way back when, when I started. You went and you picked it off the shelf, and now it's fitted. And it's, it's fitted just because of how the gear fits and to make sure they're safe inside of a fire. Um, we're, we're purchasing this gear under the Metro Fire contract, which went, go out to bid. Uh, as a group, we get a little better pricing, and so the gear that we're, we're uh, we're asking for, the money is in the current budget that we have. Uh, turnout gear, uh, it's this, the prices have skyrocketed. I, 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 I really can't believe it. I mean, um, a couple of years ago, they were two thousand dollars, now we're over three thousand dollars for this gear. Uh, the gear usually lasts between seven and nine years. That's the shelf life for this gear. So that's what we're asking for. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief?
Should it, uh if fighter leaves, does the equipment go with them?
No, 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 no. What, what we do with the equipment right now is, it's like they're in loner gear. We, we try to match it as close as we can. Uh, the other thing we use some of the gear for is um, when we go on fires, uh, the carcinogens that's on them, which is a big concern right now. We launder the, the gear at the station, so in order to launder it, we put them in a, in a loner set, just till we can launder it, because it's gotta go through a wash cycle and then a dry cycle, and the dryer isn't like the dryer you have in your house where you throw it in. We can't dry it like that. It's air-dry. They're hung and they're just, they're air-dried for and it could take twelve to eighteen hours to air-dry that stuff because it's so heavy. But no, the gear does not go with.
So since it's fitted, how does it fit the next person?
Well, we try to get as close as we can. And that's, that's the problem we have, you know. We, we can get close, bless your my size, and then
Okay, I'm glad to know you washed. I was wondering what you do to get that.
It's a, it's a, washing machine is it sounds like a jet engine when it's on the spin cycle. It's not like the one at your house. Uh, that the, the fluid that goes in them, there's four different detergents that go into the machine at different times to get the, to get the carcinogens off, and you hope you get it all on.
Perfect. Thanks. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you. We will now go to resolution twenty-five dash sixty-five, and we'll turn the time over to Ms. Young for our equipment rental free fence.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is um, an approval that we're asking from council. Uh, we Uh, this is um, an approval that we're asking from council, uh, we for West Fest, we typically bid and ask for bids for three years, just so that we're not bidding every service every year. So three years ago, when we took West Fest uh, into the city, we solicited bids and and had a three year bid from Utah Tents and Events. And it was about twenty six, twenty seven thousand, so it didn't need to come to council for for approval. But we have chosen now to add some shade um, at the at the entertainment stages uh, for the pleasure of the viewing. Audience for those stages, and so that increased the cost to over thirty thousand. I was advised by um, by the city attorney's office that we were okay to not necessarily do an R F P this year because. Of the timing and and the the three year bid, but we would R F P it for next year, so we are seeking approval for. Um, uh, thirty four thousand dollars uh, to Utah Tents and Events for um, the the tents and the shade structures and and a lot of things that they provide for us for the city festival. There is no need for a budget opening, that money is within the the West Fest budget.
Okay, any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason not going to be here for the next one.
And Jason is sick, so he's on Zoom and I said I would present this, but he's available if there are questions that I can't answer. So this is a a program uh, that John mentioned in our, in the strategic retreat that um, we didn't know that was approved and so um, we have moved to um, to get bids for this, so. At Centennial Park, the softball uh, scores score towers and are are primarily concrete and over the years, there's been a lot of. Water damage, just water gets in there and freezes and kind of cracks the concrete and so um, it just looks really bad, we've had an engineer look at it. Um, they've said there's nothing structural structurally wrong with it right now, but that could change as as uh, further deterioration happens, so. Uh, we put it out to bid and we got four bids back, three of them were responsible bidders. Um, and so we are um, asking to have approval to um, to C N R coatings who will repair the the concrete and and do a sealant on the flat surfaces. For a total of a hundred and forty four thousand four twenty two. Um, and and uh, we have been in communication with them a lot and um, we, our goal with them is to have it done before we host the senior softball. Um, World Senior Softball Tournament in July and they're they're confident that they'll be able to have it done by then, so it's a a beautiful facility and um. And looking a little better than some of the concrete that's out here.
We have any, uh. Uh, my only, my experience recently is we we need to have some. Contract language that penalizes them if they don't get things done on time.
Yes.
Know what I'm talking about?
I do. Yes.
Uh, so, yeah, can we, can we do something there, especially if we have something, you know, that is.
I believe there is in the concrete, I believe there's a deadline for the end of June and then de- uh, typically there are liquidated damages that come into play if they're not done by that date.
So the damage is is the whole building, not only just a few walls.
Um, it's it's in several different places, it's also on the top of the scorer's tower, just some of the, it's kind of just bubbled and so that will be sealed as well. So it's in, it's in a variety of places under the scorer's tower. The concrete bleachers and things that were done more or less are still okay, those those have been done, those were probably done about fifteen years ago. Uh, but it's the, it's the kind of underneath the um, the walls underneath the scorer's tower that are the the biggest problems. Probably worse so on the west side than the east side. They were done, they were done at two different times and probably just a difference in the quality of concrete that was poured at the time.
Any other questions? So park related, but not this project. I had someone tell me the the park at. Now Centennial City Park. Right there by the animal shelter, isn't used very much anymore. Is that true?
Um, it's used a lot more now, it wasn't used um, very much for a long time, we didn't have uh, Granger Baseball who used it a lot. Um, that kind of didn't uh, wasn't able to get a lot of players through COVID, kind of twenty nineteen, and so. We have been working with a local group who who has all kinds of baseball there, so it's being used a lot more now.
Okay.
Uh, Granger Baseball still practices there, but doesn't play there, there's a lot more use than there was, um. Even uh, the baseball that we've been working with just started in twenty twenty four, so this will be their second year over there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And we certainly try to get a lot more, um. Really great use going on over there to, you know, keep some of the problems that we sometimes have there out.
Where is Granger baseball?
Uh, Granger Baseball doesn't have a league anymore, a lot of the kids have been absorbed into the league that's that's provided from there, but also kind of hu- the Hunter Cypress has acquired a lot of the Granger kids that do want to play.
They used to use those fields for All-Stars and things like that.
They did. Yep, and they kind of use them, they they have a lot of, they have a variety of of leagues and tournaments that play there as part of that that league and they coordinate all that, so we don't have to do that.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now turn the time over to Mr. Arsaldian. He will present the next two items, resolution twenty five sixty seven and twenty five sixty eight. Both have to do with the Veterans Memorial.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, and if I if I may, both presentations are the same, so I'm going to combine both. Uh, twenty five sixty seven and sixty eight in one presentation. Um, to to go back just a little bit, remind you, several months ago, I presented to you that uh. We have an opportunity and we had succeeded to uh, receive the match request. Uh, from Salt Lake County T R C C. And consequently, from that time, about three or four weeks ago, I applied uh, for the first phase. And we have received the five hundred and twenty four thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars for the Phase One Match. And now we are trying to work towards. The construction and completion of Phase Two to receive the remainder of the three hundred and ninety nine thousand one hundred and twenty five dollar that is due. Uh, needed to be completed for us to receive that fund by June thirtieth. Again, uh, in Phase One, we worked very hard to finish the project in three months. Uh. Making it November twenty first, twenty twenty one. And I thought I would never put myself in that circumstance again to do. Such a short period of time to construct something that is very near and dear to me and and. Uh, the timing is so short for June thirtieth, it's going to take a miracle, but we're up to the challenge. So the Phase Two, which we are trying to uh, accommodate the World War Two. Aspects of of the Veterans Memorial, there is several. Uh, pieces that we are going to be installing, one of which will. The primary one is the one to the, my bottom left. Right, which is the uh, Navajo Code Talkers. And that statue is uh, going to be bigger than life size and it's going to be on this Phase Two project. And two other uh, monuments, uh, they're they're plaques, but a bronzed uh, monuments. One of them is the one with the airplane, that's the. Uh. Nineteen forty four uh, Halyard. Uh, down the air airplane with all of the men and women, uh, the airmen that you see walking away from it. And uh, this year was the eightieth anniversary for. Operation Halyard that happened in Serbia. And uh, they did uh, a presentation of the little plaque that this major. Big plaque was made from, which is approximately six foot, uh, four inches by by twelve foot, eight inches. Big and the one next to it is the. Uh, the Normandy uh, landing and uh. And that's our uh, men and women from the Navy and the Marines that are. Landing on the Normandy, Normandy attack. And there's a couple of other pieces that's going to be going in this. Uh, World War Two Memorial. And I'm, the reason I'm saying this, because there's one item that has been donated by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. So. The first one I want to talk about is our agreement. With E D A Architects. So both E D A and Oakland Construction were the. A primary contractor and the architect for Phase One. And at that time, we did a lot of concessions and uh, brought the price down quite a bit. Uh, from the original price to the two point one million dollars. And uh, the reason we chose the same group, because they showed a lot of interest in their loyalty and to the city and. They are very. Patriotic group that wanted to be involved with this. So obviously, the last four weeks, otherwise this would have been here to you way before now. Uh, we had to sit down and negotiate. Uh. Their their fees, negotiate and uh, do some changes and cutting to make it fit our budget. So the the number that you see for uh, E D A Architects. Is, and I also, you see that there's twenty eight thousand dollars deduct that they donated to the cause. So when it came to uh, work with Oakland Construction. Uh, that's where. I had a lot of challenges, we needed to do a lot of concessions, we needed to do a lot of negotiations. Because obviously you know that with construction world today, you wait one day, you have to double. Uh, the price that you pay almost. So we worked very hard the last four weeks and Oakland came from two point. Six million dollars down to the number that you see uh, as their proposal. And uh, they worked very hard, they talked to all of their suppliers, they presented. The the point of view of our city's need to have meeting our budget. And uh, how important it is for us to honor our veterans. So, yes, it took a lot of doing and I believe. There was miracles on both sides, so.
Hmm.
As a staff, we're asking you to approve both of these uh, agreement and contract. So that we could begin the construction as soon as possible. Because June thirtieth is about eight weeks, nine weeks away. No worries, uh. Jake Arsland will not have another heart attack. But we're going to work very hard to make this happen, we're very proud of it, the final product will be something that. You will be very proud of in our city to show off how we honor and respect our veterans. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? So do you have an overview of how this will play into Phase One?
Absolutely, um. It's not in this presentation, but. I'm sorry, I didn't put it on there. Um. If you are standing in front of the memorial where the flags are.
Yeah, I probably need to see it from above, so um. When are we voting on this one?
It'll be May sixth, but I could probably email out that.
Yep.
To that, if that's okay.
Yeah. Because without saying that, I can't. Clear this one out. And how.
I have it on a thumb drive.
How much more property does it take?
We are only taking about half an acre, we have about an acre and a half. To the south, we're not going that far, we're just taking the south berm off where the trees are. As you walk in towards the memorial and we're going from there attaching this bottom. Presentation to it, so it will be a continuation seamless and it would not look like it was an add on. It would look like a continuation of Phase One.
Okay.
But I'll be happy to send some of those pictures.
I don't know if it'll be helpful for anybody else, but it'd definitely be helpful for me.
Are we still offering? Folks or organizations to purchase? Own or. There. Recognize someone, probably offering that as.
Absolutely, that um, flyer that I presented to you, uh, it would. Make it where people could either donate or wanted to put, uh. Purchase a brick or a, uh, one of those concrete sitting or whatnot, so the center portion that you see. On here in the middle of the picture of the end of the uh. Monument. That is made of granite and the LDS Church donated the stones. That Delta Stone has reserved for the LDS Temple. Uh, the Salt Lake Temple and the discussion, uh. I liked the stone when I saw it and the gentleman laughed at me and said, well, you need to go and talk. To the LDS Church, but two weeks later, he came back, said. He did the talking and the church said, give them whatever they need, it's almost a tune of uh, ten to fifteen thousand dollars worth of granite. Donating for this cause. Yes, sir.
Current parcel map, I'm looking, can we add a. Shows that the park's on three acre, a three acre parcel currently.
The whole part, the current parcel is three acres.
Yeah.
The property due to south of the parcel, which we own, is one point six acres and we're only taking half an acre of it.
So you are expand, you you would like to expand into that other parcel that the city owns?
Yes. So if you have the original Phase One portion, the south part, there is some trees. And and the berm looking thing, we're taking that berm and adding from it going south. Uh, doubling the size of that berm into a flat area.
Do not see any other questions, so thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
If I could, I apologize, like you say. You know, Jake alluded to this a little bit, uh. But, um, I don't know if we quite caught everything. When the bids came back or when he started went back because of when we started this. I mean, hundreds and thousands of dollars over what we first thought about and um. But Jake, I mentioned, I know you've mentioned it, but I think he's understated a little bit, his effort going out, working. Working them down, working even the artists down. Um, like he he worked really hard to get literally hundreds and thousands of, hundreds of thousands of dollars. To get us back close to that original amount, but just because of inflation and and, you know, the original. These didn't include two of these, uh. But going back to the the artist and. I I was actually there walking through when Jake was working him. And so I just appreciate him getting it back closer to where we presented originally, but. It it jumped up quite a bit, like significantly just because of the inflation and so. We kudos to him and his his team to be able to get that to where it is right now.
Thank you.
Um, one more question.
Yes, sir.
Is the mayor Ron Bigelow, DC working with you?
Yes, sir, I'm working with Councilman Whitestone and Utah Veterans Memorial Committee now. Which Councilman Whitestone, uh, former mayor Bigelow is part of it, uh, Craig Thomas and a couple of his. Uh. Team members are part of it and there is three or four. Uh, uh. Veterans that are part of the committee and I presented to them. The entire presentation, um, about two months ago, month and a half ago. And that's when Councilman Whitestone said, we need something to go out and solicit and some brochure, so. I was fortunate that Aaron Krim in our uh, 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 city created this brochure. And we have handed some brochures to the committee to start going out and showing the original and the addition. And how they could contribute and um, be part of this.
Okay, thank you.
And sorry, Mayor, I'll have those pictures sent out.
Okay, thank you. So I am very vigilant. All right, for our consent agenda for May sixth. It's just the normal easements. Fees and purchase agreements, did anybody have any questions on those? Okay, pretty sure I know the answer, but are there any of the resolutions you would like added to the? Consent agenda? There was the ones from the park. Uh, fire here. What else? The tent rentals.
Okay, the tent rentals, you want a consent agenda? It's, it's, it's pretty minimal.
Yeah, it's kind of a smaller change. Anybody opposed to just moving that one down to the consent and the rest is good? Okay, let's do that. Thank. Okay, let's do that. So now we have the um agendas for the R D A Housing Authority and the Building Authority. Those will be tentative budget items, so we turn the time over to Mr. Welsh to discuss those.
Then place on the Housing Authority, are we still, when does that transfer officially?
So our we, our Housing Authority will remain even through the end of the the year, the calendar year, but the official transfer should be July first.
Okay, everybody's looking.
That's a very good question, thank you. And and then the question is, why are we going through the budget for the Housing Authority for twenty twenty-six, I would imagine? So um the three agencies, the Housing Authority, the Redevelopment Agency and the Building Authority, uh we are considering the adoption of the tentative budget. Uh like previous years, they they're balanced and they're, these agencies exist for specific purposes. The Redevelopment Agency this year is a little over twenty-three million dollars. Most of that um consists of revenues that come in from increment that's generated through developments. And much of that plays, they can use for debt service. Uh there's a small portion for administrative expenses and then also for incentives for development. Uh and that's the extent of that budget. The um next one is the Housing Authority, which um Mr. Whitestone you just asked about. Uh the revenue on that one's five point five million dollars. And most of that money uh comes in through vouchers. If the uh Housing Authority is no longer under the umbrella of the city, the budget will still be in place, so even if we operate within one day of the new fiscal year, it'll be covered. Other than that, it will just go away and it'll be a moot point afterwards. So we're doing this so that we're in legal compliance. And then the um, whoops. The Building Authority, um as you recall, is set up as a debt service organization uh for uh city facilities. So the actual bottom line, which is kind of interesting on this one, if you bring it up, it shows a zero. So the net balance budget is zero, meaning that we bring in these seven point four million dollars and then seven point four million dollars will go out towards debt service. Uh but that's the sole purpose of the Building Authority, and um that represents a balanced budget also. And that's the end of what I have for those.
Councilman Christensen, are you, oh, mayor's back, never mind. Continue on whatever you're got.
He was just done.
All of them?
I was quick.
Very quick. Hey, thank you. All right, now we'll turn the time over to Mr. Peely for our property tax discussion.
Jim, um let me just, just in case I, so really, we just put this on the communication item. It's that one slide that Jim already talked about, but we just wanted to separate it because there are two different issues, there'll be two different approval, um two significant approvals. I mean, the budget itself will be approved by itself and then um so we we had this separated, but there is that slide. I don't know, maybe you wanna just go back to that slide.
Back to my presentation, that's the final slide in mind, if you don't mind.
If you wanted to have a little bit more discussion about the property tax, uh we may not have any more questions about it right now, but um you know, as Jim mentioned, we do have that four million dollar increase, but we don't have the revenue increase to to go with it. So we do, we do have some reserve. Um I will, we'll say philosophically when it comes to to reserve, Jim and I may even have a differing opinion on it. In fact, we we debated a little bit about this, but um I I will tell you, for me, uh I don't think more reserve is better. I do think there is a, an amount that we need to keep in there. I don't think the more you, you just hoard more. Uh I don't think when cities I don't know, brag or or talk about how much reserve they have or just talk about how much reserve they have. I don't necessarily think that's, that's, that's great financial management. I think maybe your taxes are too high and you need to lo, you need to lower them. Uh because we really, our revenue sources from the people. And uh you know, I used to have a counselor I used to talk about. You know, for our rainy day fund, we talk about this rainy day fund, but it's raining. Let's let's use some of that money. The other reason why I look at it differently is, especially when it comes to capital, rarely, uh I don't, I don't know even uh you look historically with the Money Management Act, what we keep in reserve, any interest we get will rarely, rarely outpace inflation. So that money, the more we keep in there, the less we have over time. And to to me, if there's needs, there are needs out there, then we should spend the money. Negative part about going on that trajectory, about losing, we've already talked about this in our 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 strategic planning meeting, but if it's unplanned and we just keep going down on our reserves, uh you have bond, bond rating implications. It's not necessarily, you know, it's it's not looked at positively. But as far as philosophically, I I'm not as concerned. I mean, we, Jim and I both talked about, we've had to make decisions during the recession. That's what everybody lives to, right? When you, when you want to maximize your your reserve, everybody says, well, what about rainy days? What about these times? Well, I've been through rainy days. And anything we've kept in there would be wiped out in like six months anyway, if we had to rely on that only. And so I I wanted to talk about that because um I'm not, I'm not saying sky's falling with the reserves there, but I I do believe that there should be a healthy amount in reserves for various reasons, including including rainy day. But um and and we really don't have many options besides cutting services or raising taxes. And I wanted to talk about this a little bit just because I know it was brought up, uh which I, I think it would be um wonderful opportunity to get us on a on a trajectory where we can start building back up that reserve. I don't think we necessarily have to go fully to cover the whole gap at this point because we could, we could look at where we are as revenues come in and we can hold with some reserve. Uh but that's the, you know, I know it was brought up in our strategic planning meeting about the resolution to have uh have our property tax increase in perpetuity tied to the C I P. So this is the slide that he brought up. We don't have more presentation to that. Just wanted to get any more thoughts from the council or any other questions you might have.
During the the retreat, Lars mentioned that we should make sure that our budget is sustainable and whether this happens this year or next year, like, do we have a sense and that maybe this is a crystal ball question? But um like, will this sustain the city for a while? And I'm also thinking about, you know, this potential buyer station that I guess we'll have to bond for and service that debt now. So uh and if it's too much of a crystal ball and you have sales tax and we have this increase that could potentially absorb those additional expenses, but how?
You know, depending on where we we go, and and I know it's really about what we're, I mean, there's politically what 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 the appetite is. Uh you get, you tell us what you're comfortable with. Um if you just look at that, I mean, six percent takes, gives us two million dollars in revenue. We do have an increase of four million dollars, right? So that, that'll get us halfway through uh covering that. More than half of what we're asking is strictly public safety, right? And the only reason I bring that up is typically residents are.
Easier to swallow.
It is, it is. Um this has been my experience, the only time I've ever got a a standing ovation telling a city that we're gonna raise their taxes was when I was presenting for U F A. And he told them we're gonna raise their taxes by nine percent and I got a standing ovation. But that's because I had all the firefighters behind me in uniform. Uh so, so I mean, if if we did that, I mean, that's really, again, that that really is your your public safety increases that we're asking for. Again, our, it it doesn't, it hasn't, uh it won't present positively um that we just keep going down with our reserves. But I mean, we we may have some solutions, Jim and I have talked about some solutions to be able to to switch, switch the days around to be, to be able to manage that for the next couple of years. And so as it, as we get that perpetual increase, I think it can certainly, certainly help us cover that.
So one of the, when you ask about sustainability, I think we had some really good discussions when we had the strategic planning retreat. One of those is um was what rate of, uh what is the rate of expense growth within the city? What does it cost to run us from year to year to year? And the data that I had found and examined, although we had talked about the Consumer Price Index, which is really easy for people to understand, uh the cost of providing municipal services usually outstrips that by a small percentage. Um so our costs typically run a little bit more. We have a lot more infrastructure. We don't have just, we're not paying for milk and eggs and and rent. Uh we're paying for things like the the ballpark that's being rebuilt and the parking lots need to be redone and the sewer lines and not sewer, but stormwater, things like that. So our costs tend to be a little bit higher. However, um we also have some very volatile revenue sources, for example, sales tax. Uh one of the things that happened and and Mr. Peely mentioned this, we've been through, uh he and I have both been through a number of recessions, as as many of you have, we've lived through them, right? And we've had to be as creative as we can to manage the the scarce resources of the city, which I consider taxation to be probably the ultimate scarce resource because it's very close to people's, people's lifestyle and their homes. But um what happened in the pandemic, which was interesting, is they immediately said, okay, everybody's gonna go home. They're not gonna spend another dime and sales tax is gonna fall through the floor. Well, it did in some places. I mean, if you lived in metropolitan New York City or California, uh things fell through the through the floor. But if you lived in West Valley City or any place in Utah, uh suddenly everybody got out their credit card and said, hey, I can, I can have everything delivered to my home. And we had a momentary drop and then it it exceeded what we had. So that's very volatile. I think trying to build a sustainable budget on a volatile revenue source is challenging. It's not something that um is not recommended because we know it's always gonna be there. It's like buying, buying insurance. You know, there's gonna be a loss one year, but a couple of years, you're gonna have a good year. So over time, it's gonna even out. But uh that discussion about sustainability is very important. And I believe that the um, um the state legislature has provided councils with the tool to influence their uh stability through revenue sustainability through property taxes. Now, they've also made it challenging by requiring us to hold public hearings, by requiring us to go through the angst of having a tentative budget and a proposed budget and multiple public, public hearings. Um it takes us eight months to put together a twelve-month budget, but that's of necessity important so that you can consider these important things. So that's kind of my narrative on it. We've had these great discussions. Uh Mr. Peely and I go through this quite a bit and our philosophy is a little bit different. I'm, I I would much rather have a much stronger reserve balance because I believe that provides greater flexibility or different kinds of difficulty. But that's also balanced against the need of citizens to not overpay for their services. And I think that's, that's a necessary tension that brings efficiency to our government.
May I say something? Yeah, I wanna say something and I wanna hear from you guys, a lot of council members. Uh majority of us, we uh buy a home and very much we take thirty years to our mortgage or fifteen years to pay our mortgage. By the time we pay our mortgage off, we retire from our job. And now we pick up another bill, that's a property tax to pay. Basically, Kelly, we landed land from the government. You know, right now in New Jersey, the one of the highest property tax in the nation. And they are trying right now, they're working right now to reduce their property tax now. They see that. Florida, they pay back eighty billion dollars to residents in Florida for property tax. Texas reduced their property tax. California have their property tax. Why? Why? We, they 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 consider, we rented a home from the government and they wanna stay away from that as much as they they can. Whereas we have two golf courses here in our city and we subsidize that almost every year for that. We go out, we play golf from our cities, we pay hundred dollars for a game, or hundred fifty dollars for a game. But here we pay only ten dollars. Who paying for that? For ninety, ninety dollars, the gap right there, the residents in our city. We do the math. We see how much they're gonna carry for this, but how long? I have a feeling like uh we're not explore enough information or get enough information to solve this problem. We took a try to get into property tax and we took barrel very hard. Think about a lady in in my district, eighty-three years old, carried a oxygen, oxygen tank. Where's she gonna get money to pay for property tax if we increase? Because they will relate to the mortgage, insurance and taxes. So increase the whole package. You know, a story I wanna say with you, a guy, he went to see Bishop. Said, can you pay me a mortgage this month because I lost my job? What I went out and I found uh a job already. I think I found a job already, but I'm not gonna work for right now for this month. But next month, they're gonna hire me. Bishop said, well, you know what? You go home and sell your big truck and nice boat and come back here and we can talk more about this. I have a feeling like uh we need some kind of plan, uh some, some kind of, we have to explore more options to do this. I know it's a one dollars, two dollars. To us, maybe it's not that much money. We can go out, we can find money, try to do something like that. But for people like eighty-three years old lady with oxygen tank carried by nearby her, where's she gonna, how's she gonna do that? Where's she gonna get money? And the property tax will increase every other year. You're gonna be a higher up and be gonna, another bill, big bill for residents in our city. We landed, we landed land from government. And other city, other states in the nationwide, they're trying to reduce that. They say, you know, we, we, we aren't free and clear for our house to pay for thirty years, fifteen years on mortgage, it done, but actually it's not, not done. You still owe money from the government, property tax.
Yep, you know.
I don't love property tax either, but it's the system we're in. And um and I think this is coming from me, it's coming out my mouth.
Almost never does.
I know, I'm not a fan of taxes, but I think um you know, whether it's thirty-four or fifty dollars a year for fire, police, the increase, you know, I I would, I think I can justify that. I mean, and Tom, you know, if if we had a different system where we could change our cell tax to cover that instead of property tax, I'd probably be okay with that. But the system we're in is um, you know, is the system we're in. So we gotta pay for our expenses and uh our only real mechanism to do that, we can't make people spend more in our city. Our only other option is to increase property tax. I don't like it, but.
We can sell those, we don't need them, you know, same.
We can, we can sell lots of assets, but but that money will also be gone.
Wait till we gone and then we can do something.
Here's the thing, you have an asset that appreciates. It's not like a truck that depreciates. It's land that is appreciating, so probably faster than if we had the money in a savings account. My biggest thing is, I like the fact that My biggest thing is I like the fact that we don't need huge reserves, because all that is doing is. Us having high taxes now that are putting money away for the next generation to use when it's needed. I agree with charging what we need to, to cover our, what we need to pay our bills every year. But not overcharged just to have higher reserves. Um, of this increase of the four point four, whatever. So the land acquisition of nine hundred and fifty thousand is a one time. I'm not thinking, I mean, the body cams might be a one time. So that's another three hundred thousand and the protective vest. So one point two million is one time money that we won't need next year. I need it in five years, but not next year. And then I don't know about the firefighters and the additional sworn officers. Are those going to be that expense for the next three years to build those up where they need to be?
Well, one of this firefighter, the six new firefighters were ones that were already approved last year.
Okay.
And we needed to raise the budget to cover it, right? Because it, and so when, you know, with this fire station that we're proposing, you know, there's going to be. I think you talked about another nine firefighters just to cover that new fire station. Um, on top of that, we also are requ, fires also requesting more firefighters, even without that new fire station. And so the operations cost on, on just the new fire station alone will wipe out anything that's listed on, on this. But fortunately, I mean, hopefully through, through time, you know, we have different ways of covering things. I mean, even if it is assets that we look at, but, um. The, the other thing is chief is, chief's looking at some, you know, safer grant to cover us for the next couple of years. Uh, with some of the requests that he's had, but it just, it just keeps going up. I mean, you know, every city, right? Or every, all of our, even our home expenses, right? They'll just continue to grow with inflation and we just. The cities, we, we usually don't keep up because there's a political issue there. When you put things in perspective, I mean. I, I think I'm just doing quick, quick math, but. Men, it's like fifty bucks for the average household. They're paying like fifty bucks a month to the city out of their whole bill. You know, the county, the school district gets, but to the cities, like fifty bucks a month total. For police, fire, parks, everything, um. They pay more to the H O A, if you're in a H O A, you pay more to your, your H O A than you do to the city's portion of, of taxes for all these services that we. We get for, for that. And I know that's, you look at your tax bill, I know most residents don't, don't differentiate between what's actually coming to the city. And what's going to everywhere else. And so it, it's, it's really a hard sell. I mean, I, I get it, it's a hard sell to, for people that are on a, on a strict budget and. Uh, but we're, we're actually not the biggest, as far as per, per service, first services that we provide. Um, fifty bucks a month to, to get all that that the city provides. I mean, it's a really great deal that the city gives to the residents.
Well, and the three point five will stay going just to, to support the public safety.
Yeah, that's just the public safety.
Yeah, and so we have to raise taxes to be able to cover that, because that's not green fees, that's not. Your tea time, that's not anything but just public safety for a city of our size. We can stop building townhomes and apartments and houses and stay the size we are. But if we're going to keep getting more people, public safety is going to be one of our biggest expenses. So I'm comfortable with at least going the six percent and then. Getting it up to that point, even if we had to go another, a nine percent.
Round it up to fifty bucks a year, you know, like it's close to nine percent.
Yeah, and then that will cover our ongoing public safety. And I'm not a big fan of reserving funds for the future either, because it's just a different generations funding your future.
So when we were down in St. George last week, at one of the sessions I went to, because I'm a nerd, was revenue budgeting. And it was fascinating and I actually took a screenshot of talking specifically about property tax rates. And this mainly was with small communities and how much of their budgets come from property tax rates. And they will hit their residents with these high increases. And what caught my eye was Wayne County, because my husband's from Wayne County. And they had a twenty-seven percent increase one year to fund their budget. So, and I think we need to educate people on, on what they're doing. And luckily, we live in a big city, we don't have to raise it that much. But it was fascinating about that is how high they had to raise them. And they also talked about raising them incrementally, rather than hitting their residents with a one time. So those were all things that I think we could consider doing. But I think it's inevitable that thus, if we need to fund our public safety and things like that, we're going to have to do it. Um, I also had a conversation with a senior in my neighborhood and you can't raise taxes. Well, do you want that police officer to come to your house? That type of thing. So I think it's necessary, I think we need to educate and let people know it's not just West Valley. You know, we've got to do this to provide for our residents.
Well, and I think our website, Finance has done a great job of itemizing out that you're only paying six to seven hundred dollars. Of your tax bill to West Valley City, the rest is for mosquito abatement, water district, school district. School district, I think, is the biggest taker of the finances. So.
So yeah, if everyone would go and educate themselves.
Yeah.
But they don't, they react, it's reactionary.
A lot of people think that as the values of homes increase, that their property taxes increase. But, but it doesn't. And, and most of our residents don't understand that, that uh. We don't have to approve tax increases with, because on sales tax and income tax, because. As the prices increase, our taxes increase, no one notices that that's, that's a tax increase. Because it's only a percentage. But uh, with, with property taxes, they only go up when we decide to make them go up. And it's our most reliable, sustainable source of, of revenue. And we're really doing a disservice to our future residents if we don't keep the property tax going up. We are not charging people for making them pay the government as, for their home. We're making them pay for their services that they, that they get. It's not, it's not that we own the, the property, we don't. But they live in our city and we provide the services and, and those, those increase. So I think increasing it, so it goes to about fifty dollars on, on a. Medium home value is a good idea and we should consider raising it regularly to keep up.
Yeah.
So that it's a, so that it's a sustainable revenue source for, for our future.
When was our last, like, two or three percent increase, four, nine?
Yeah, we did, we did one for a little over three million dollars about four years ago and that was for the, uh, commitment to law enforcement and fire.
So generally, with our increased residents, that's where it needs to go up is our public safety is a big increase.
It's, they're the majority of the budget. Um, of course, you know, the, the rest of our entities are pretty much support. But uh, yeah, the majority of our buzz, budget does go to public safety. And um, excuse me, the uh, uh, the increases, it's interesting if you go back and look over the period of time, compare that to the. Going back to the C P I, if you add those up, that's about where we are. Um, incidentally, um, the city had not done an operational increase for a number of years until I think it was two thousand and. Six or two thousand and seven. And um, because those increases had not occurred, there was a significant deficit. We ended up, percentages are always the inflammatory number, it's the dollars that make a difference. Nevertheless, there was a sixty-seven percent increase that the city council needed to pass. Uh, incidentally, that was in around twenty-two percent of their property tax bill. So it was fairly large, but it was catch up for all those years that they hadn't done that.
And we haven't done one for four years?
I think it's been four years going into this year.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just raised something, I think that that increase or decrease, I think before they understand, but I think where is the option we have? We have multiple options to solve this problem. Says that we can sell some of properties that we don't use right now, we can solve immediately. What we have right now and then later in the future, if that's the case, we can increase the property tax and we increase the property. I mean, like I said, well, option A, option B, we gotta explore a little bit and try to study thoroughly and try to figure out how to solve that problem. We don't study option A or we don't, we don't study option A, but we don't study option B. We just focus on option A and we just go forward with that, and that's what I'm trying to say.
But the, the challenge is that, that the things that we need the money for are ongoing. Selling property is one time money. And we don't use one time money to pay for ongoing expenses. So we, we need, we need ongoing revenue.
I think it's the, we sell our property, it's going to be, have a large amount of money, not only small. Here we can need, we need like four or five million dollars, but we sell one property later, probably the golf course right now, twenty million dollars. We can spend them for the next twenty years or the next ten years or fifteen years, you know what I'm saying?
Five.
Five years.
Five, but this, I mean, this increase is only five years worth of solution, so.
It's a pretty small amount of time for the life of a city.
Yeah, and an asset that increases in value. Anyway, any other questions?
We did just to that, and I, I will assure you, I mean, we, we are exploring other options. So we are looking into all, all options and we'll continue to. It, it's just that this is, we're coming up, up to our budget here, I just timing. Um, right now, we, we are, like I said, we're actively exploring all, all different options, even options that we haven't really discussed with you yet, but you know. Um, you know, Jim and I have discussed of some, some ways to look at that and we'll, we'll continue to. Well, like I said, we, this is where, we're at tentative budget stage right now and then we're going into. Um, in our final budget here in the next several weeks and um. And we, we can't bring a, a, a unbalanced budget to you, so. Um, I, I wish some of these options, we can say that for certainty. That's how we're going to balance the budget, but we, they're not certain right now, so we're just in a state of uncertainty. And so the only option we do have is to go back and just cut it all off until, and wait. Or bring this proposal of, of getting our tax rate to where it can cover at least some of this using reserve as well. You said, if we came and just proposed to just use our reserve. Even I would be uncomfortable with where our reserve level would be, in spite of the fact that I, I'm not, I'm like what you said, man, I'm, I'm not. For hoarding cash, I'm. Uh, so even with that view, I, I still feel comfortable with, which is using a hundred percent reserve for this uh, for this budget. So that's what it, it is, it's just about timing right now. But we're, yeah, again, I want to assure you, we're, we're looking at all these other options.
Yeah, one, one thing that the, the person with that discussion that I went to, they said. The property tax is the most important revenue source of any city and I think we need to keep that in mind.
I agree, that we focus on, if we try to shift our focus to someone else, we can figure out how to lead. The city, how to turn the city different way. And I think this depend on a person, how to create, have a outside the box. I'd kind of, I, I like that way, outside the box, try to figure out how to tackle, and that's a lot of challenge thing, tackle things, try to figure out. How to do that, I'll go back to, you know, this one is kind of private bank. Every time we need to make money, go to our private bank and get our money, that's an easy, easy way to do. Kind of video how to do it, kind of figure out outside the box.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're past six thirty, so council calendar, everybody good? Perfect. Uh, future agenda items will put off till next week, council reports will put off till next week. And our closed session will put off till next week, so one more motion? I mean, basics, sorry, basics, we'll put all of it up till basics. So motion adjourned, all in favor, sir?